Sorry, we're running just a bit late. Hey Chuck, do you mind joining us for a second? You can't escape just yet. I'll go ahead and call this March 6, 2017 meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order, and considering this is Chuck Stern's last meeting with the city council, I would like to ask Chuck to lead us in the pledge this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to our love for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Although not noted as a presentation this evening, we do have a very important presentation to make, and that's to congratulate Chuck Sterns and thank him for his over 33 years of dedicated service to municipal government in the states of Montana and Colorado. As you all know, Chuck stepped down just a few weeks ago as city manager, but he's still our former city manager until Thursday. Many of you probably don't know much about Chuck's background, so I'm gonna give it a little bit of story to you. Chuck received his undergraduate degree in finance and small business from the University of Colorado in Boulder, and went to receive his master's in public administration from the University of Montana. After serving as store manager for Kalispell Logging and Welding from 1980 to 1982, Chuck headed south and served as the fiscal analyst for the city of Missoula from 1984 to 1987. He then went on to serve as the finance director and city clerk for Missoula from 1987 to 1994. Chuck continued migrating south and finally left Montana to serve as the town manager for the town of Mount Crested Butte in Colorado, where he served in that capacity from 1995 through 2004. Chuck ended his career in Colorado in the town of Georgetown, where he served as town administrator from 2004 through 2008. Rumor has it while in those posts, it wouldn't be uncommon to see Chuck driving a snowplow or issuing parking citations during his spare time. Chuck was one of five finalists who applied for the city manager position in Whitefish in 2008. And I personally recall meeting Chuck at the public meet and greet which at the time was held at the former Crush Wine Bar. When I asked Chuck if he had ever skied at Big Mountain, he quickly pulled out his season pass from, I believe, the early 1980s, smiling, and I knew at that time that Chuck would be a great fit for Whitefish. He quickly rose to the top of the candidate pool and was offered and accepted the position, of course, only after conferring with Rita, who gladly indicated, yes, I will join you in Whitefish. So thanks Rita for allowing us to have Chuck these past eight or nine years. Chuck landed in Whitefish at a rather difficult time. Former finance director Mike Eve had passed away from a courageous fight with cancer, so Chuck had to assume the duties of both city manager as well as our finance director for many months. A monumental undertaking, particularly as the Great Recession, as Chuck refers to it as, set in. Together with the help of his directors, staff, and council, Chuck was able to balance the budget in very difficult times while still moving forward multiple capital improvement projects and urban infrastructure projects, including the reconstruction of Central Avenue using resort tax revenues. Together with Karen Hilding and John Wilson, Chuck helped secure a $3 million Tiger Grant Award from the Federal Highway Administration for the reconstruction of US Highway 93 through downtown Whitefish. Chuck was instrumental in forming the Whitefish Community Library and assisted the Board of Trustees in transitioning from a county managed facility to a full-fledged city-owned and operated community library. Under Chuck's leadership, the city moved forward with many long-range planning efforts, including the Depot Park Master Plan, the US Highway 93 West Corridor Study, and the soon-to-be-adopted Wisconsin Avenue Corridor Study. One particular project that, of course, is dear to this council and that I'll always credit Chuck for is his work on the Haskell Basin Conservation Easement Project. When I was approached by the Trust for Public Land and informed that the city had about 18 months to come up with $7 million in public funding, of course, the first door I knocked on was Chuck's to see if this was even a reality. Chuck went to work and developed a well-thought-out creative funding mechanism to close the funding gap that allowed the council and our community to move the Haskell Basin Project over the finish line. And of course, the new city hall and parking structure. And Chuck, you just have to promise that you'll attend the groundbreaking ceremony if you're in town. I know you might be on a bike trip, though. But we'll think of you when we cut the ribbon. Anyway, I could go on and on, but I think everyone here gets the point. Chuck, you will be missed, but we know where we will find you: on the slopes of Big Mountains in the winters, catching Chair Four at 9:00 AM at the Farmer's Market on Tuesdays in the summer; on Friday at 5:05, filling your growler at Great Northern Brewing Company; or on one of your many planned bicycle tours. We wish you and Rita health, prosperity, and many laughs together. On behalf of the city council, staff, and the community, thank you very much for your service to Whitefish. It's certainly been an honor for all of us serving by your side. Congratulations. We do have a memorial plaque in recognition of Chuck's 33 years of service, and I know there's former councilors and many employees that have worked with Chuck here tonight. And I've asked Heidi with the Whitefish Pilot to please take a photo of us along with Chuck as we present the plaque this evening. Those photos didn't count. Shout, please. Thanks, Heidi. Thanks, guys. Thank you all. Thanks so much. If I can find my paperwork. This is gonna be a mayoral proclamation acknowledging the National Retired Educators' Day. I forgot to mention that Richard Hildner's attending a separate event, but this one's for him and all the other retired teachers out there. Whereas Montana educators have been instrumental in the creation and implementation of an outstanding education system in our state, and whereas educators have touched the lives of thousands of students in schools around the state of Montana, and whereas the challenges of educating, which are as variable as the talents and personalities of the students, require extraordinary patience and sensitivity, and whereas every student becomes a better human being and a more responsible citizen because of the dedication and efforts of teachers, administrators, and all other school personnel, and whereas retired educators continue to support public education through volunteering and in supporting schools and communities across the state, using their expertise and energy in a wide variety of ways, and therefore I, John Mollfeld, Mayor of Whitefish, Montana, do hereby proclaim Thursday, March 9, 2017, to be Montana Retired Educator Today Day. Excuse me, and just congratulations to all of our retired teachers here in Whitefish and the greater Flathead Valley. Mike, I think you're up. We'll move on to Item 3B, which is an update from Mike Cronquist, our owner's representative, on our city hall and parking structure construction project.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, as you can look around and see, we're headed by the city hall, we are rapidly coming to the end of this long process and project. You'll notice that the canopies, the framework of the canopies are up along, they're along, excuse me, Seven Street and along the way to the city hall.
They're working on the canopies now for the parking structure side of it. The brickwork is done, completed on city hall. The glazing, the storefronts, the exterior storefronts are in, and in place, of course. The only thing that's not installed yet, and that will be one of the last things, is the entry doors. We don't really wanna get those damaged, they're wooden. Assembly. The painting is continuing inside, mostly it's just touch-up trim, things like window seals, stain work, final stain, and the like. The wainscoting, the paneling, all the finished carpentry is underway. We're getting very close to being finished in the council chambers. And in the, and in the, I think she wants me to wait a minute.
Sorry.
I can continue. I can continue. Anyway, the cabinetry is being set in the break areas and in the conference rooms on the second floor. The cabinets and countertops and things are being placed in the admin areas on the first floor. Some of the cabinetry is in place there. As we work through this, there will be pretty more and more of the owner furnished office equipment in place as it comes in, becomes available, and space becomes available to put it in. The tile on the second floor, the second floor restrooms is complete. Some of the fixtures in the restrooms are being set as tile and finished work is completed. The tile, they're working on tile as of today, and the downstairs restrooms, that should be done by the end of this week. They're installing lights, the side lights along the office doors. They are completed on the second floor, and they're working on those this morning on the first floor. That should also be completed by the end of the week. The electrical is continuing. The electricians are setting fixtures in the drop ceilings. They're terminating, hooking up the control systems, the things that control the lights and so forth. The mechanical work is progressing towards the commissioning effort. We're getting the final wiring, the final hookups, the final checks, all that stuff in place, so they can actually do a test fire on the boilers. And that is tentatively planned for the end of this week or the first of next week. Then it'll be helter-skelter, getting all the bits and pieces and operations gear in place in order to start the commissioning activity. While that's going on, they'll continue working on finishing the brickwork on the parking structure. The CMU work in the parking structure is all complete with the exception of the wall between the retail space and the parking structure. That is started, and that will be, for the most part, done this week. The elevators are being shipped. They are supposed to arrive Monday or Tuesday. The crews will be on site to start installing those. Let's start with the southwest elevator shaft, and then we'll work to northeast. The, like I said, the brickwork will continue until it's done along Baker Street. It's at probably about the 75% completion now on the parking structure, or on that, sorry, on that Baker Avenue face. The scaffold today on the northeast corner of the parking structure to begin the oversized brickwork that wraps the alley, and then they will continue the brickwork along from the east, northeast corner inward to the west. I guess that's where we're headed. The canopies, when the weather gets a little bit better, we'll start putting the decking, the roofing, and all the final pieces on the canopies, kinda waiting on the weather clear a little bit, so they can put them out in paint and be done with them all at once. Landscaping is another weather contingent item. Expect that to start probably the next two to three, four weeks, something on that order. We didn't have any real communications to the public this period. We've kinda been waiting for things to settle down and the flurry to sort of stop and some of the dust to settle, and so that Heidi and I can walk about, take some pictures, and get right up into the pilot. What else have we got going on? It's pretty much it. We're working towards, like I said, just finishing. We, I did get around and talk to the business owners about restricting that alleyway a little bit. That alleyway, but it will only be restricted for about two weeks, and yet you can still get in and out of there, it's not closed off. It's just, it's a little bit inconvenient. We haven't had no contract activities for this period, and at this point in this day, I have no immediate concerns. Questions, Mr. Mayor?
Thanks, Mike. Any questions for Mike? Jen?
Just a quick one. The pre-cast damage that was done that we spoke of a couple of months ago on that southeast corner of city hall, have they attempted to repair that?
Not yet. They're waiting on weather. That's a weather issue, too, so as soon as it gets warm enough and nice enough, they'll fix that.
Okay.
Further questions? Not seeing any. Thanks, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate the update. We'll move on to Item 4, which is communications from the public. Time set aside for folks to comment on items that are either on the agenda but not advertised for a public hearing, or anything you'd like to bring to the council's attention, and as John knows, just for the record, name and address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. My name's John Anderson. I live at 1076 Creekwood Drive. I'm here tonight to congratulate Chuck Sterns. I, a lot of people get a bad, get government a bad rap nowadays. They say it doesn't work, but some places it does work, and this is one of those towns where it absolutely does work. And it works because of the people within government, and Chuck Sterns, and all of you staff members around the table are absolutely a part of it. I remember the first council meeting we had, it was one of the more contentious ones we had in the term that I was up here, and they happened to be the very first one. Didn't know Chuck from Adam Offox, didn't know what he could do, and I didn't intend to test his abilities that night, but I think I did anyway. You might recall, that was when the school district asked us for a sizable donation for completing the high school. And after I started looking at the issue, I asked Chuck a couple of questions. I asked him to calculate a few things. And then the hearing went on, and I asked him again to calculate a few things a different way. And then I asked him again, another question, and he did this for an hour and a half. The hearing was an hour and a half. And it wasn't just me peppering him with questions, it was the rest of the council. Every question, he nailed. He gave us good information that we could rely on. He was using a calculator at his table to do that. So Chuck Sterns, a remarkable government employee, that I think if folks would model themselves after his work ethic, his integrity, his impartiality, and his outright competence, I think, I think Whitefish and the rest of this country would be in a great place. So Chuck, congratulations on a great career, personally.
Further public comment tonight? Not seeing any, we'll stay with the public. Any volunteer board reports from the audience? How about the council? Not seeing any, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Any changes or additions to the February 21 meeting minutes, or can I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion was seconded by Councilor Franson. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that passes unanimously. Michelle, which brings us on to our public hearings this evening, which we do have five. We'll be starting with Ordinance 17-4, and this is an ordinance rezoning approximately 10 acres of land comprised of 13 parcels in the Ramsey Avenue right-of-way located in Section 26 Township 31 North, Range 22 West, and Section 35 Township 31 North, Range 22 West, in Flathead County, Montana, from County R4 to Whitefish WR2, and adopting findings with respect to such rezone on a first hearing.
Good evening, mayor and council. As you recall, on January 17, you guys did a resolution to annex a number of properties around the city that were wholly surrounded and/or connected to water and sewer. Because those properties previously had a county zoning, Whitefish now has to rezon them to a comparable Whitefish zoning district, so that we can then administer planning and zoning on those properties. The first of those, as John mentioned, is on the Ramsey Avenue area, about 10 acres of properties there. They were previously zoned, County R4, and we're rezoning back to what they had been when they were in our jurisdiction, which is WR2. Those properties are at 400, 408, 512, 520, 528, 539, and 544 Ramsey, as well as 323, 331, 339, 341, and 345 Fraser Avenue, currently a mix of developed residential uses and vacant lands. In order to change the zoning, we have to review the several findings of fact under state law that they were, this rezone was made in accordance with the growth policy, in which it is that it will secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers, which it does, promotes public health, safety, and general welfare, which it does, facilitates adequate provision of transportation, water, sewers, schools, parks, and other public requirements, which it does, provides a reasonable provision of adequate light and air, has no effect on motorized and non-motorized transportation systems, promotes compatible urban growth, and gives consideration to the character of the district and suitability of the particular uses, which it does, conserves the value of buildings, and encourages the most appropriate use of land throughout the jurisdiction, since we're going back to existing zoning that we had before, it does that, and it also considers the historical and established use patterns, including trends, when making the decision. Staff recommended approval to the Whitefish Planning Board. On February 16, the Planning Board reviewed that. There was no public comment at the meeting, and the Whitefish Planning Board unanimously recommended approval. Be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions for Dave? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on what will be our own Ordinance 17-4, and we'll hold that public hearing now. Any public testimony on this item? Any public testimony? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council. Frank?
I would move to approve Ordinance 1704, an ordinance rezoning approximately 10 acres of land in the Ramsey area.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Franson. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that passes unanimously. Michelle? And we'll move on to Item 7B, which is 17-5, an ordinance rezoning approximately .832 acres of land located at 6356 Highway 93 South in Flathead County, Montana, from County B2A, which is their secondary business district, to our own Whitefish WB2, which is our secondary business district, and adopting findings with respect to such rezone on a first reading. Dave?
So this particular parcel is the parking lot at Pizza Hut. It was, for whatever reason, never annexed into the city. It is now annexed into the city, so we're changing the zoning from the County B2A secondary business to Whitefish B2 secondary business district. And once again, we have to review it according to the findings, according to state law, and it is, the rezone is made according to the growth policy. It secures from safety of fire, panic, and other dangers, promotes public health, public safety, general welfare, facilitates adequate transportation, water, sewers, schools, parks, and other public requirements, provides adequate light and air, has no effect on motorized and non-motorized transportation systems, promotes compatible urban growth, considers the character of the district and its particular suitability, particular uses, it conserves the value of buildings, encourages the most appropriate use of land throughout the jurisdictional area, and historical use patterns were considered in making this rezone request. Staff did recommend approval. There was a hearing before the Planning Board on February 16. There was no public comment. The Planning Board unanimously recommended approval. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dave? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on what will be Ordinance 17-5. Any public testimony tonight? Public testimony? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move it back to council. Frank?
I'll move to approve Ordinance 1705, an ordinance rezoning approximately .832 acres of land located at 6356 Highway 93 South.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Franson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that, again, is unanimous. We'll move on to Item 7C, which will be Ordinance 17-6 now, rezoning approximately .827 acres of land located at 1210 O'Brien Avenue and O'Brien Avenue right-of-way in Section 1 Township 30 North, Range 22 West, and Section 36, excuse me, Township 31 North, Range 22 West, in Flathead County, Montana, from County R4, their two-family residential district, to our own Whitefish WR2, which is our two-family residential district, and adopting findings with respect to such rezone on a first reading. Dave, again?
So this particular property is along O'Brien Avenue, next to O'Brien Bluffs. It was not part of the original O'Brien Bluff subdivision. For whatever reason, it was never annexed into the city. Was current, or previously County R4, however, it was, before that, it was R2 when we had jurisdiction. We are proposing to change the zoning back to WR2, which is the appropriate zoning for that district. We reviewed the rezone according to state law and our findings of fact. This rezone is made according to provisions of our growth policy and the future land use map therein. Does secure from fire, panic, and other dangers, because we do have Whitefish Police and Fire that would now respond, being in city limits. Promotes public health, safety, and general welfare. Facilitates adequate provision of transportation, water, sewers, schools, parks, and other public requirements. Gives a reasonable provision of adequate light and air. Has no effect on motorized or non-motorized transportation systems. Promotes compatible urban growth. Considers the character of the district and sustainability of the particular uses therein. Conserves the value of buildings and encourages the most appropriate use of land throughout the jurisdictional area. And we did consider the historical use patterns. Because it was annexed into the city, it does need a zoning change. We did recommend approval. There was a public hearing on February 16. One member of the public did speak at that, the property owner, Pete Costain. He did petition the Planning Board to consider changing his zoning to a commercial zoning that would be more compatible with adjacent commercial zoning that's directly to the east of his property. The Planning Board declined to do that. They did recommend approval of the staff report and the findings therein to rezone the property WR2.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions for Dave?
There was also a letter that he sent that you guys should have also had as part of the packet.
Thanks, Dave. Not seeing any questions, I will go ahead and open the public hearing for what will be Ordinance 17-6. Public comment, please. Linda?
Linda Costain, 1210 O'Brien Avenue, Whitefish. Do I have to say it again?
You can go ahead. Yeah, thanks.
So I'm assuming, and I just heard that you all received the letter that I sent you with the map. Historically, 1210 O'Brien Avenue has been brought up in city council meetings more times than I care to think about. Due to developments in 2006 and 2007, and as part of the Donut, attending meetings for the Donut, attending meetings in Kalispell... and as part of the donut, attending meetings for the donut, attending meetings in Kalispell. I'm over this. During, now after ten years of construction on both the right and the left of twelve ten O'Brien, I will ask you again to respectfully please, treating my home as a puzzle piece that does not fit, please stop and have a discussion on what to do with the residence that the city placed in a business park, instead of just rubber stamping the WR two zoning. And then, in reference to the February ninth zone change staff report, I'd like to address item, a couple of items here. So when it comes to item F, effective motorized and non-motorized transportation systems, I'm not sure if this is the right time, but these are things I brought up as a concern in two thousand six and two thousand seven, but everything went through as the developer wanted, and these have been problems that we've had since then. So on O'Brien Avenue, we've had four trees that were hit and a rollover on that section between my house and the police department, which I don't think too many people know about. Not all of them were reported, because there are drunk people cutting through. There has also been a significant problem with traffic flow on that section of street, mainly during the construction phases, but also now with the snow. That section of road on O'Brien does not have no parking like the wave does on one side or the other, and so we have construction vehicles on one side, and then people parking for the new business park on the other side, so there's a single lane to travel through, and that needs to be addressed, as well as, I'm surprised the fire department hasn't addressed that as well. Related to adequate light and air, I'm going to add noise to that, because my house is in a business park. With the increasing development of O'Brien Bluffs, there is industrial snow removal, and so all night long, I've kept awake with the beep, beep, beep of snow removal, and that was not something the city ever considered. Related to number H, the consideration to the character of the district, in particular suitability for particular uses, our lot is divided by residential and business, and the city chose not to include us in the residential, although I begged to be included in the residential. We were pushed into the business park, wholly surrounded by backyards, even though the mission statement of the, one of the, I don't know what document it was, but it was a document in two thousand six that said, you know, they came and interviewed everybody and said, what do you want to see done? Mission statement of that was to incorporate old neighborhoods into new neighborhoods, and I was told in two thousand six and seven that that was not something you could enforce. So I was not included in the development of O'Brien Bluffs. On J, it says the proposed zone to WR two would encourage the most appropriate use of land, as it would be the most similar to adjacent properties. Because I look into the backyards of all the residents that surround me, my primary view is into the business park. So again, I don't think that that's an appropriate zoning. The historical use will be considered under K equally weighed with the will be, you'll weigh the historical use pattern of the property as well as recent changes, and I feel like you're ignoring the recent changes to the neighborhood, again, because it's a business park.
Thanks, Linda. Appreciate the comments. Further public comment tonight on this item? Not seeing any, I'll close, close the public hearing and turn it back to council for a motion or discussion. Frank?
I'm going to move to approve this, but I might, I want to take into account some of Linda's concerns. David, have we? Is there a reason that we have not been able to address, or at least consider, some of these issues over the years? I mean, obviously, it's been going on a long time.
In that property, when we did our growth policy, we had a designation of suburban residential or urban in that area, residential future land use that applies to that property, and so, and the existing zoning had been R two. I think it currently has a residential use on it. It is in a transitional area between a couple of different places and in the future. You know, if we do a more detailed study of that area, we might look at that, but right, you know, the zoning matches the future land use of our growth policy, so.
And just, Linda, so you know, at any point, if you want to change the zoning on that, you can come to the city with a proposal to change it.
I think that's what we're doing right now, right?
No, we're simply changing the zone, we're converting what you currently have now from county zoning to city zoning that's the exact equivalent. That's what's being done now. We're not changing your use pattern or what the use is on the property from what it has been historically to something new. It's going from a county construction to a city construction, same use.
Right, but I could have had the opportunity at the county to change my zoning to a more appropriate zoning, but I just am so sick of going to these meetings, and when? It's a big can of words for me.
Yeah, yeah.
Took up a huge portion of my life arguing this a while back, and I could bring up multiple things that were done incorrectly, but I disagree.
Thank you.
Motion?
I will move to approve ordinance seventeen oh seven, an ordinance, sorry, excuse me, seventeen oh six, an ordinance rezoning approximately eight two seven acres of land located at twelve ten O'Brien Avenue and O'Brien Avenue right-of-way.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second for discussion.
John?
Dave, what is the legal requirement for rezoning when we annex? Is it to conform as closely as possible, or?
Well, we're governed by our growth policy and what the most equivalent zoning would be that the county has. There are some instances where someone either, in the time that the county had the property, changed their zoning to something else, where we're not necessarily going back to what it was when we had jurisdiction, only had a couple of properties that ever happens to, but, but, you know, we, that was previously in our jurisdiction. It was zoned WR two then. Two years ago, the county took it into their jurisdiction, changed it to a county equivalent zone to our WR two. Now that we've annexed it, it's in the city. We're just merely changing it back to what we had it for the last twenty years previously, before the county had jurisdiction, so.
Thank you.
Further questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Michelle? Which brings us on to item seven D, which is ordinance seventeen dash seven, rezoning approximately point one four acres of land located along the south side of West Nineteenth Street in section one township thirty north, range twenty-two west in Flathead County, from county B two A to Whitefish WB two, and adopting findings with respect to such rezone on a first reading. Dave?
Just to note that there was an error in the packet, and that staff report wasn't in there, but you should have got a copy from Michelle prior to the meeting. Yeah, this is on West Nineteenth Street, along Baker Avenue. It's just a very small strip of land that, for whatever reason, was never annexed into the city. The, for years, it was zoned B two, and when the county took it back into their jurisdiction, they changed it to county B two A. Because we annexed it in, we need to change it back to our WB two secondary business district. It's just a sixteen-foot wide strip adjacent to the office building that's under construction there right now. So under the review of the findings, we are making this change in accordance with the growth policy. It will help facilitate safety from fire, panic, and other dangers. It will be in city limits with city police and fire, promotes public health, public safety, and general welfare, facilitates adequate provision of transportation, water, sewers, schools, parks, and other public requirements, reasonable provision of adequate light and air, has no effect on motorized or non-motorized transportation systems, promotes compatible urban growth. Considered the character of the district and its particular suitability for the particular use, because it had been previously zoned B two, conserves the value of the buildings, encourages the most appropriate use of land throughout the jurisdictional area, as it's done according to our growth policy. And we did look at historical use patterns and recent changes, and we made our recommendation, which was approval. It was, went before the Planning Board on February sixteenth. There was no public comment. The Planning Board reviewed it and made a recommendation to support the staff's finding of facts, that it be approved. If you have any questions, be glad to answer.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions for Dave? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on what will be ordinance seventeen dash seven. Any public comment tonight on this item? Public comment? Not seeing any, I'll close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for a motion. Frank?
Ordin, I will move to approve ordinance seventeen oh seven, ordinance rezoning approximately point one four acres of land located along the south side of West Nineteenth Street.
I'll second.
That motion has been seconded by Councilor Franzen. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion carries unanimously. One more, for those in the audience, who are obviously doing some general housekeeping, as you can tell from the overwhelming public comment that we're receiving. We'll move on to ordinance seventeen dash eight, an ordinance rezoning approximately one point eight seven acres of land located between Lena Joy Drive, Shiloh Avenue, and the Whitefish River in section one township thirty north, range twenty-two west in Flathead County, Montana, from county R three, which is their one-family residential district, to our WR one, our equivalent one-family residential district, and adopting findings with respect to such rezone on a first reading. Dave?
So this particular property is a storm pond owned and maintained by Montana Department of Transportation. For whatever reason, it was never annexed into the city, and so we recently annexed it in January. We're recommending approval of this zone change, and we believe that it's made in accordance with the growth policy, and that it does secure from safety, from fire, panic, and other dangers, promotes public health, public safety, and general welfare, facilitates adequate provision of transportation, water, sewers, schools, and other requirements. It is a storm-drained pond, so that does fit in there. Provision, reasonable provision of adequate light and air, has no effect on motorized or non-motorized transportation systems, does promote compatible urban growth, consideration of the character of the district and its particular suitability for particular uses, conserves the value of buildings, even though there isn't any on the site, the most appropriate use of the land in the jurisdiction. WR one was the zoning that it was previously. And then, historical use patterns have been reviewed. Staff did recommend approval to the Whitefish Planning Board. The Planning Board reviewed that on February sixteenth. There was no public comment. They unanimously recommended approval to the council. Be glad to answer any question.
Any questions for Dave? Not seeing any. We'll go ahead and open our public hearing for what will be ordinance seventeen dash eight. Any public testimony this evening on this item? Public testimony? Not seeing any, I'll close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for a motion. Frank?
I move to approve ordinance seventeen oh eight, an ordinance rezoning approximately one point eight seven acres of land located between Lena Joy, Lena Joy Drive and Shiloh Avenue and Whitefish River.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Councilor Franzen. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that, again, passes unanimously. Thanks, Dave. We'll move on to communications from our fire chief, Joe Page. We heard about this at our last meeting, which will be a consideration and consent of letter and petition to add nineteen properties to the Whitefish Fire Service Area. Chief Page?
Good evening. I've presented you a request from the Fire Service Area to add nineteen properties to their fire district. Because of our agreement, intergovernmental agreement with them, it needs to be approved by the city council prior to them going to the county commissioners for final approval. Nineteen properties are down on Pinnacle, just south of our rural station.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Page? Not seeing any. We will need a motion approving the consent of a letter and petition to add nineteen properties to the Fire Service Area. Frank?
I'll be happy to do it. I would move that we consent to, or we need to consent to the letter and petition to add nineteen properties to the Whitefish Service Area.
Second.
That was seconded by Counselor Williams. Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously. Michelle? Thanks, Chief Page. Move on to item nine, which is consideration of an engineering contract with Robert Pescha and Associates for the Summers Avenue Reconstruction Project, which will be funded with resort tax revenues in two thousand eighteen fiscal year, and this is on page two fifty-nine of your packet. Good evening, Craig.
Good evening. I'll spare you guys the long introduction on this one, other than tell you that we're still talking about the RFP that was done late last year. And at this point, this will be the sixth of seven projects that we looked at during that RFP, so we're getting really close here. But it was the recommendation of the interview committee, which was comprised of Karen Hilding, Mayor Melfeld, and myself, that we do move forward in a negotiation with Robert Pesch and Associates for the Summers Avenue Project. This is a project which is next on the list with resort tax funds, which will reconstruct the six blocks of Summers between East Second and East Eighth Street. The project includes complete water main replacement, stormwater improvements at the intersections, as well as complete curb, gutter, and roadway reconstruction. We're optimistic that we'll be able to reuse the majority of the sidewalk out there, although a complete survey will be done, and sections of sidewalk that need to be replaced will be included. It's anticipated that we'll be bidding this project about a year from now, and breaking ground on it in the spring of two thousand eighteen, so that we can complete it during the summer months of that, next summer, or a year from this summer, summer of two thousand eighteen. This first phase of engineering essentially includes the preliminary engineering, will include public outreach, and then final design. We'll move forward with a future task order to complete the engineering after we finish that preliminary design and public outreach. We'll follow a pretty similar schedule as we have on past projects with public outreach, beginning this spring, where essentially the, the residents will kind of see the blank canvas approach. We'll go back and do the preliminary engineering and then show them what we've come up with in the fall. We have much more constraint on this project, because it is already an urban section. It already has curb and gutter and sidewalk and a number of older growth trees, and so we'll want to be very cognizant of that during the design, but also want to take into consideration things that the local residents have seen living on that street. So, based on this, the Public Works Department has negotiated with RPA to complete this phase of work, and the estimated total is a hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred dollars. The fiscal year two thousand seventeen budget for this project is three hundred thousand dollars for engineering and design only, and then we'll be carrying this, this budget forward in fiscal year eighteen, and perhaps the first couple of months of fiscal nineteen as we finish it. So, based on these factors, it is the recommendation of the Public Works Department that a motion be passed to award a contract to RPA in the amount of a hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred dollars to begin work on the Summers Avenue Reconstruction Project in accordance with the scope of work included in the staff report.
Thanks, Craig. Any questions for Craig, or can I have a motion, please? Frank, you're six for six.
Once you get in a groove. I would move to award a contract to Robert Pesch and Associates in the amount not to exceed a hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred dollars to begin work on the Summers Avenue Reconstruction Project in accordance with the scope of work included in the staff report.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Franzen. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously. Michelle? Thanks, Craig. We'll move on to item ten. You have Adams reporting, close with the packet. Any questions from the council? Frank?
This actually goes to both you and Craig. Do we know what the cause of the water main break was? I mean, I know what happened, but what caused that to happen, or do we have any idea?
Can I take this one?
Go for it.
The break at the corner of Sixth and Baker was on the T intersection on the twelve-inch main that goes up Sixth Street. It's a section of main that was installed in nineteen ninety-nine, so in terms of water main, one of the newer pipes in town. I mean, we're not talking about one of our old cast iron pipes that are wearing out, and, you know, we fund to replace every year. you know, we fund to replace every year. It was a newer pipe. When we installed that pipe, we used what was called a direct connection, and those direct connections have a T that basically goes over the top of the pipe with a gasket, and then a valve is installed, and you drill through the valve into the pipe so that you can basically make this connection without taking water service out. It's a very common industry standard connection to be made. Somehow during this connection, though, either at the time that it was made or shortly thereafter, there was a failure in the gasket, there's a rubber gasket that surrounds that saddle T, and there was evidence on that pipe that this gasket had been leaking for many years. In fact, it was blowing out of the gasket to the point where it actually wore a hole in the PVC pipe. And at that time, Sunday night, when that hole basically wore through the pipe, it created what's called a spiral fracture, and the entire length, that entire twenty-foot stick of PVC pipe, basically fractured. And so we wound up with this crack that was twenty feet in length and just emptied our entire supply of water out in a matter of about an hour and a half. And it was really the perfect storm of events, you know? I mean, it happened at about midnight on a Sunday. It was a twelve-inch main, which is one of, you know, the larger arteries we have, and it was at one of the lowest elevations in town. And you see, you put all three of those factors together, you know, we can't get to it immediately. By the time we responded, it was only about thirty-five or forty minutes by the time we had guys out there turning valves, but there was so much water coming out of this pipe that, you know, we lost our entire supply in about an hour and a half. So...
Well, good job getting it corrected. I think the public outreach was exceptional, and thanks, Craig and Adam and Chuck for helping with that. Further comments on Adam's report? I had a question, Adam. So you indicate that you're still in leaseholder discussions with the retail space. Do we know when we're going to come to some resolution on what those spaces are going to require in terms of...
Yeah. The realtor that we're using has reached out to both parties here in the last couple of days, and just hasn't had anything back from them. There's one party that's securing some funding from a local lending institution, and they expect that any day, but we've been waiting for a few days for that, so hopefully they can put that together. The other party, we're just waiting on some of the particulars that they want inside the space. So once we have that, we can kind of put that together, and that'll all kind of be part of the lease agreement, and so hopefully we should have those, should be soon.
Are we still in a position where we can finish those retail spaces before we open the parking garage in City Hall? Are we starting to push the timeline a little bit?
No, I think we're still okay.
Okay.
I mean, could they move some guys over there to start doing a few things? Sure, but there's plenty to be done around the rest of the site. But, you know, I mean, obviously, they want to get done by mid to late April, so they do want us to let them know a few things probably within the next couple of weeks, but I suspect that we'll have that information for them.
Great. Thanks. Appreciate it. Any other items to report on, Adam? Between March first and March sixth?
No, nothing significant has come up. I just will reiterate what has been said here about Chuck Sterns. He clearly knows what he's doing. He knows the community. He's got that history. That is something that I don't have, but give me time, I'll catch on. Big shoes to fill, but he's doing well.
Well, we have full confidence in your abilities, and we're here to help in any capacity, so please reach out as needed. We have the tentative FY eighteen budget calendar from Adam. We will, I believe, require a motion adopting the FY eighteen budget schedule. Adam, if I'm not mistaken, isn't our first preliminary meeting this week? Or is that next week?
Yeah, preliminary stuff is this week.
Okay. Can you remind me of the time?
Wednesday, eight AM.
Okay. Thanks. So we'll need a motion to that effect, adopting the FY eighteen budget calendar. Jen?
I will move to approve the FY eighteen budget schedule.
And I'll second.
Motion was seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and just for the record, Richard Hildner has returned. How did it go?
It's great. I'll comment.
Okay.
Counselor comments.
Thanks for returning. Move on to item eleven, which is communications from the mayor and city councilors, and we will start with what will be Resolution seventeen dash eleven, which is a resolution of intention indicating its intent to exclude from the city boundaries property described as Lake Park Edition, tract four and block one, section twenty-six, Township Thirty-one North, range twenty-two west in Flathead County, Montana, and this was brought forward by the property owner for your consideration this evening. Adam, is this your item?
No.
Angie?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Bruce Tate actually brought this petition forward to exclude a parcel of his property that we annexed in the West Lake Shore area. It's on the edge of the annexation. He owns two parcels. He's actually asking us pursuant to this statute to de-annex only one parcel of it. And so I prepared the resolution, but perhaps Bruce could speak to his petition.
Okay. Bruce, would you like to approach and just name and address for the record, please?
Thank you. Haven't been talking too much in the last hour, so I'll warm up the pipes here. I'm Bruce Tate, and my wife Susan and I reside at eighteen hundred West Lake Shore Drive on the west shore of the lake here, and I really do appreciate the time and consideration that the council members and the mayor showed me on an individual basis, talking about this particular tract of land, which is a very dubious tract and can never be built on. And the only council person I was not able to connect with was Andy Fury, and he was in China, and I apologized, Andy, for filling up his voicemail for six weeks, but I finally realized he must not be in the country. But we had, we had good exchanges. I hope I answered all of your questions about the uniqueness of this particular tract, and hopefully it will, will fit in the overall scheme of things with my house lot, with the improvements on it being the north, east, no, northwest end of this annexation, and the lot that we own next to the house lot being excluded from the annexation. Am I correct in assuming there were, we did a, a request that, did that get in your packets, too, the one that, that I had done up with a little help from some others?
Yeah, we have in front of...
Along with the resolution that Angie had worked up?
We have the resolution, your letter dated February seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, as well as the map, Montana code annotated references, and the plot map.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. There are, there's a word change at the bottom of the official resolution here that the last paragraph, whereas tract four, it reads "may never be built," and I would suggest changing that word to "will never be built." That's a more definite word to use there, and that same change from "may" to "will" on the sentence at the top of the next page. And that, that would be the only suggested change I would make. And if, if Angie has any, any other changes that she feels need to be addressed, please let us know, Angie. She was a great help in getting us drafted, and I appreciate her time and efforts, too. So I thank you all for this consideration, and especially for your time, because I know you're all very busy, and I'm gonna, with that, I'll say goodnight and hope for a good outcome. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Bruce. Frank?
Angie, are you comfortable with those two changes?
Yeah, I'm fine with those changes, Frank.
I'd like to move to approve Resolution seventeen eleven, a resolution of intention indicating its intent to exclude from the city's boundaries property described as Lake Park Edition, tract four and block one, section twenty-six, Township Thirty-one North, range twenty-two west, PPM, Flathead County, Montana.
I second.
That was seconded by Counselor Williams. Discussion on the motion. Frank?
Yeah, I, I appreciate all the work Angie did on this, to a large degree at my urging, or I think a number of us urging. This is a vacant, irregular-shaped lot that for all intents and purposes cannot be built upon. It does not require city services, will never require any city services, nor would it benefit from any services, given that it's unbuildable. And therefore, this is a truly unique piece of property that just happens to be on the border, on the very edge of the city of Whitefish, that I think is appropriate for us to de-annex. And so I would urge my fellow councilors to join me in approving this.
Further comments or discussion?
Yes.
Jen?
Does that include, does your motion include the suggested changes from "may" to "will"?
Bruce, I would just like to comment. I know this, this issue's been very dear to your heart and your entire family. I know you're very passionate about this, and there's usually, there are two ways to handle it, and I felt the way that you handled it, you were professional, very patient, understanding, and most importantly, very respectful of the decision that would have to be made tonight, and I just want to let you know that I very much appreciated that. On that note, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion carries unanimously. Thank you to your family. Any comments regarding Heather Moll's letter regarding the City Beach ordinance that we passed last week? Frank, two weeks ago, excuse me?
Yeah, and I, and I will, I meant to do it last week when we got this letter. John, I'll, I'll take it upon myself to write Heather back directly, but one of the things that aggravates me, and she's not to be faulted here, but the news coverage that we received, or that was received on this particular matter, gave everybody the impression that the Whitefish has gone berserk with creating new regulations and restrictions. Nothing could be further from the truth. The reality is, is that no new restrictions or ordinances or rules are going to be applied to the use of and at City Beach. We have, in fact, reduced the number of rules that have to be complied with down at City Beach through this process. And as for her issues with dogs, I appreciate that, I truly do, but as I understand it, dogs have been restricted and must have been in that beach since nineteen...
Sixteen.
Nineteen sixteen. So again, we're not making any huge news here or changes, other than reconfiguring and actually reducing the number of rules and regulations down there, and I will write Heather back directly, because when I, when I saw the news coverage, I knew this was coming, and nothing could be further from the truth.
Agreed. Thanks for following up with Heather. You have enclosed, I believe, did we include it in the packet? We did. The letter that Maria drafted indicating the council's support for the proposed rule amendments and suggested additional rules and policies regarding prevention, detection, and containment of the spread of invasive mussels and other AIS species to Montana state waters. Maria provided me a very well-written letter. I appreciate that, and I've gone ahead and signed that letter, and I just need council approval to go ahead and submit this to Maria.
I move, did you submit it?
Okay. Thanks.
Second.
Show of hands? Great. Thank you. Frank, how about the insurance committee?
I've been all but worthless. If somebody else wants to do it, fine, otherwise, I'll be happy to take, continue...
What's the level of commitment?
One meeting a year.
Okay.
And really not needed then, but yeah.
Right. Anyone else vying for the position? We'll just need to...
Anybody helping for trades? No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah. We'll need to motion to reappoint Frank to the insurance committee.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand, and that's unanimous. Michelle? Enclosed in the packet were some of the maps regarding proposed changes to our urban growth boundaries, a prelude to an update of the Extension of Services Plan. I think we've had time to review that map since our last work session two weeks ago. We'll need some council direction on those suggested changes.
David, is the map that we've got identified as page two ninety-one of two ninety, two ninety-one, I guess, is that the entire, is that a global map of what we were trying to include in our growth boundaries?
Yes.
And the follow-up map, follow-up maps are just blowups of certain sections of that? Is that correct? Mr. Mayor, what form does this policy direction need to take? Is this simply just a show of hands, or we, we need motions?
I think, I think we generally just need your input on these suggested changes to the maps, which will, you know, form the basis for the update to the Extension of Services Plan. So if you're generally comfortable with these additional, you know, seven or eight areas, then I just believe Dave and the Planning Department needs direction to that effect, and I'd appreciate that through a motion. Before you do so, I had one question, if I may. Dave, the, the southern portion, which I believe is the intersection of Highway ninety-three and forty, I apologize, but this map isn't very, I can't orient myself accurately in terms of the actual boundaries and what those boundaries correspond to in terms of the intersection of Highway forty and ninety-three. Can you explain that?
It's where Blanchard Lake Road comes in and East Blanchard Lake Road.
So it, it carries the Highway forty corridor essentially straight west to meet up with Blanchard Lake Road, and then where it jogs northwest and then north again is the Blanchard Lake, where Blanchard Lake Road turns to Carroll. There's a blowup of it on page two ninety-four. I don't know if that helps or not.
It does, yeah. Okay. And Dave, in your opinion, the advantages of including that area south of Highway forty?
Well, it's an area that we, we can, we have the capability to extend water and sewer to. Whether that's ever annexed or not, that'll be up to how that's developed. If some petitions, the council will have opportunity to make decisions on annexation in the future, but I mean, this, the purpose of this map is to show areas that we can, in the future, provide services to, should that be required, so...
Okay. Great. Direction, motion?
Question.
Richard?
Dave, in your view, does including this in our Extension of Services Plan, this high, south of Highway forty piece, does that in any way affect or compromise the city's position that we may or may not take with regards to the ninety-three corridor study that the county is initiating?
You know, I don't think it directly affects that. You know, the only change is, is, you know, once the, because this is just some direction, the plan has to obviously go through its iterations, go through public hearings, get adopted before we change the map officially. So until that happens, I mean, I don't think there's going to be any change. Once the, this, you know, changes are adopted, it may, you know, change how some of that property is developed. If they know that they, there's an opportunity to get a water sewer, it may develop differently than if there isn't, but...
I guess the point I'm trying to make is, do we find ourselves starting down this path of... path of moving incrementally south with extension of services that may be not in the best interest of the residents of the city of Whitefish?
You know, I guess, you know, Craig could probably better answer, you know, the capacity of our systems, our water and sewer, and whether this would put undue burden on the city. You know, that's really a public works question more than anything. But I, you know, I guess having the opportunity to annex this would allow the city to have more control over how that's developed. If it's annexed, you know, things would go through architectural control, get zoned to our zoning, we'd have more control over what happens there. But, as far as the capacity goes, I'll let Craig answer that.
Yeah, you know, I mean, the perceived notion, I think, has always been, well, you know, once we cross Highway 40, what's next? You know, Happy Valley? As far as water capacity goes, you know, the, we know that we need additional fire flows in the south end of town as we continue to grow. And in order to most effectively construct a water tank, we're looking for an elevation of about 3,100 feet. You either need to get about 1,000 feet south of Highway 40, or you need to get about 3,000 feet west of Highway 93 to find that elevation. The further west you get, the further away from that key Highway 93 corridor that we're looking to serve, you get. And so, it's most economical for us, given our existing water utilities in Highway 93 and the topography south of Highway 40, to move those lines a little further south and build that storage. I, you know, from a growth perspective, I don't, I can't say that going south of Highway 40 with our utilities is automatically going to force us to continue going south. I think that having that ability to grow south of 40 is going to give us a more economically feasible way of building water storage. Which we kind of proved to ourself last week, we need.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'm just a little concerned what that, by including this one parcel, if that prevents us from some planning that we need to do ahead of time. Maybe this is part of it, I'm just, I'm a little bit uncomfortable.
Yeah, I think at this point, you know, approving this or recommending that we move forward with an extension of services update based on this doesn't necessarily lock us into doing it. I think what you guys would essentially be doing is recommending or directing staff to move forward with an extension of services update based on these areas. I think until that extension of services plan is updated and approved, none of this really is locked in. And we know that the last extension of services plan went through some pretty heavy vetting, you know, at the state level, and so, you know, I guess it's my opinion that just moving forward with an update based on these recommended changes is the first step in a relatively lengthy process, so.
I'll go ahead and ask the question, and Angie, this might be most directed at you. You know, given the county's response to our request for a joint corridor study on the Highway 93 South corridor that we just received, I believe, yesterday, what puts the city in the driver's seat in terms of being able to influence and control how our gateways develop, including this in our extension of services plan or not?
Well, I'm not sure you're going to be put in the driver's seat at any point, but I think including it within your extension of services plan, you know, shows an intent that you're, you know, planning on at some point bringing, you know, those on to, or at least have the capacity to bring those on to city services. Leaving them out of your extension of services plan, I think, would be a little bit odd if you're trying to say, "We would like to plan for this area, but by the way, we can't serve them." You know, they're not even included in our extension of services plan, so while I'm not sure you'll ever be truly in the driver's seat, I think, you know-
A passenger.
Yes, you might be passenger.
If we're lucky.
Maybe.
Do you need a motion?
We do need a motion, either adopting or adopting certain parcels or all of the proposed map changes.
Angie, that was very helpful for me, thank you. I'll go ahead and make a motion to extend or accept the direction to adopt the maps as presented on the extension of services plan.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Seconded by Counselor Williams, further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that's unanimous. Michelle? Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Craig. And we'll move on to counselor comments. Pam, would you like to start tonight?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thanks, Pam. Richard?
Several things. Chuck, I'm sorry I wasn't here for the presentation. Can you hold it up so I can see it? Congratulations, that's awesome, and I, two weeks ago, I mentioned how much I appreciated your service to our city and to council, and nothing has changed in the last two weeks to change my mind. Thank you very much for your service, I really, really appreciate it. The, Angie, thank you for the letter to the study commission, and have we heard anything back from the study commission?
I've not heard anything back yet.
Okay. Craig, thank you for the water main repair. It blocked my way home on the midnight flight as I drove back into Whitefish on that Sunday. I knew something was going on, but I still had enough water and my wife had enough foresight to fill the coffee pot so I could have a pot of coffee in the morning. But, thanks to you and your team, they really got after it, and I think that was a good effort. Where that break is in Baker, I was wondering, since I walk back and forth and I watch people hit that, the edge of that asphalt, I know you have a rough road or broken pavement or sign or something, I was thinking it might be a good idea to have a flasher right there just to remind people that who've forgotten in that last 50 meters that, between the sign and the break. And, oh, and the reason I was late is what, is I had the honor of representing the city at a gathering of members of the clergy, all, not all, but many churches and clergy from the valley, as well as the Jewish community and 42 rabbis from across the nation, and two rabbis from Canada, and the city for its part in its stand against hate, bigotry, anti-Semitism, intolerance, presented the city with a menorah made out of Jerusalem stone that, it was a very moving presentation, and I'll show it in just a second. The purpose of this menorah that was donated by the Jewish community is really to illustrate the light that shines on the dark corners of hate and intolerance and anti-Semitism, and that the light of the menorah would help extinguish those evil and vile aspects of hate and intolerance.
Thanks, Richard. I'm assuming we can find a good place for that in the new City Hall?
I'm sure we can.
Thanks. Katie?
I would once again like to thank Chuck for all of his dedication, time, and service that he has given the city, and he will be missed, and I'm sure Adam has big shoes to fill, and he will fill them well. Other than that, thank you again, Craig, for all of your hard work and the catastrophe of water, the main, water main break, and I hope everyone has a great rest of your week.
Thanks, Katie. Jen?
Congratulations, Chuck, on your retirement, and I hope you have many trips ahead of you, many cycling trips, and thank you again for how diligent you were for every single meeting we've ever had and how well-prepared you were for every one of those meetings. It just makes our job so much easier. Thank you.
Frank?
Chuck, you've been the best, thanks so much. You did give us all very, I think, all councils that you've served, you've given great confidence to with what you've been able to provide them in terms of organization, information, and perspective. So, thank you so much for all of your work. And with that, I have nothing further.
And neither do I. Anything further from staff or council? Craig?
Yeah, I'll just mention, well, first of all, Chuck, I'm probably the staff member that's spent the least amount of time with you, but I definitely don't think that's reflected in what I've gained, you know, from your professionalism and just absolute confidence in what you do, and so, I've appreciated every minute of it. As for the water main break, I'm happy to take credit for the quick actions of the city and my staff and everybody that was involved, but it was completely a team effort, and that team effort was really citywide, you know? If it weren't for the patience and the understanding of the residents and the business owners and all the water users, it would not have gone as well as it did. You know, and that really started with the folks at the North Valley Hospital that were out of water for several hours, you know, and when you look at what they do, water is obviously a very precious commodity, so I'm happy to take credit for it, but it's really a tribute to this city as a whole.
On that note, we are adjourned, thank you very much.